Okay, go ahead. We are live.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 22th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Christie, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Beerstead.
Here.
Doning.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the September 8th Rudder Meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
Uh, questions or comments from anyone? Christie, first and second on the minutes?
We'll start with Mr. Plunkett.
Hi.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne. Morissette.
Aye.
Doning.
Aye.
Beerstead. It's a seven zero unanimous vote, favor.
Next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Plunkett.
This one, I've got a question on one of the specific bills that I thought I'd pass to the whole council. Uh, I'm looking at a line item for, let me find it again here in the report, uh, General Communications Incorporated. Uh, it's page three, about halfway down, for three portable radios, chargers, and mic. With a tab of $4,740.02 for three portable radios and chargers. On this item, it's underneath the $5,000 that we've got for our bidding process. Less than the $5,000 that require competitive bids.
Excuse me, Mr. Plunkett, shouldn't we, shouldn't we have a motion on the floor before we have discussion? If you want to go ahead and make a motion on the bills, I'll second it for you.
Uh, let me make a motion on approval of all the bills with the exception of that one to be pulled for discussion if that would be appropriate.
Sure, I'll second.
Okay. So you pulled that one, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Okay, so we're, you know, $259 below the $5,000 competitive bidding threshold. But we still should have, according to our general purchases policy, uh, maintaining at least two parentheses, three closed parentheses, competitive quotes or price checks as expected. Um, we don't have that on this line item. And there's a possible explanations for this that are outside of my pay grade in looking at this. In regards to, um, policies, and this is partially grant reimbursed funds and some other issues. But I thought, considering that it was my job to look at the bills, and that's a $4,700 and change for three portable radios seemed like a lot to me. I thought I'd bring it to the attention of the board and see what you guys thought.
Say, Mr. Simpson, do we know what that, I'm assuming that was either fire or police? Or maybe the grad, the grad crew?
Uh, I believe that was for police radios, and it was bid through the, uh, we're part of a number of networks, um, of national contracting. And then we also look at the state of Wisconsin and state of Minnesota. In this case, I believe it was, um, the NASB contract, which I'm, one of my staff members is going to give me the acronym, but I think it's like the National Association of State Purchasing Officers.
Procurement officials.
Procurement officials, I was close. So it is competitively, kind of a mass competitively bid contract for items. So, but that's up, I believe that, um, even though it's a net, so to Mr. Plunkett's question, even though the net city spend is not, much of this, we still would follow, you know, if it would have went to, if it was $10,000 expense, but $9,000 was redo, $9,000 was grant. We don't use the $1,000 net amount as the, the triggering point for a purchasing policy. We'd use the full face of the contract. So in this case, this one is, I think, just under $5,000, and we would have followed according to procedures for that.
Thanks, Scott.
And there are cities that have lower thresholds for competitive bidding and, and quoting. This is kind of where we've set, um, as a city.
And correct me, I apologize, I failed to mute there. May I follow up with that, Scott, on our policy for less than 5,000 is that we should have at least two or preferably three competitive quotes or price checks?
I believe that's the case when there isn't another competitive, like a state or other. I was going to look here to see if I could find the policy quick. I think that's in our transparency page here. Technology is good. I got beeps coming in all over the place. So, um, Finance Director has provided me a link to that, so, um, purchase orders are required at the 5,000 threshold, and then we've got a matrix. I believe there's trying to read further into this policy. Yeah, I think in the narrative of the policy, and I'd want to look at that, um, the narrative of the policy talks, Mr. Plunkett, about if we've got national or state, um, competitive bidding sources, then that counts as the, uh, bid, but I would want to verify that. And I can do that, might take me a few minutes, or I can get back to the council, it's up to you.
Make any difference to me on which route we proceed with that?
You can get back, you can get back to us later, Scott.
I'll do that. We've got some, I know there's narrative, in the narrative, there's talk about intergovernmental contracts or other things, and that's probably towards the end of the narrative, so I'll get back to the council about that.
Hey, Scott. Or Mr. Mayor. So was that an intergovernmental purchase, or was that a private purchase, or?
No, this would have been a purchase, um, by the city, so the, um, I don't believe that the procurement officers, officers, um, buy the, buy the items and pass it along to us. They just do, um, they do competitive bidding processes and then kind of come up with, um, the low bidders on things, the same way the state of Minnesota and state of Wisconsin do for some items. But I, I'll, I'd rather look at the, the policy, and then I can, um, provide an answer back to the council.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else have anything on this?
Thanks, Ben, for bringing that up for a question.
So is council okay? I know, I know Ben had pulled this one, but is it okay if we vote on all of them at once, on the, the bills altogether?
I think we need to, I think, uh, we need to vote on the original and then come back and vote on that one, right?
All right, Diane, what do you think?
Yeah, we'd prob, uh, since he's pulled it, we should vote on everything else.
Okay, so, does anybody, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that'll give us a total of $927,0327.37 if I did my math right.
Okay. So Christie, I got a first and a second on the, on the bills without, without the polled item?
Okay, Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Doning.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll take a motion on the polled item?
I move we approve the polled item.
Second.
Okay, Christie, we got a first and a second on the polled item.
Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Aye.
Thank you, Gagne.
Yes.
Odine.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Doning.
Aye.
Thank you, six to one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I did vote yes on that, this is Gagne, but with the understanding that this item's going to come back to council, um, with the justification of that policy.
Okay. Okay, so next we have public comments, but before we get to, uh, the public, we're going to have an update from the KCC first. And I think Duke Welter, I used to online with those?
Yes, this is John, I'll, I'll bring them in.
Okay, thanks, John.
Yep. As Mr. Simpson said, our technology's working really well, so there's a lot going on. All right, so I brought in uh, Judy Babcock and John Duke Welter. It's on mute then, hello? Uh, Duke, I think you'll have to turn the volume down.
Dan, could you mute also?
I like it. What? Okay. To talk to my phone.
All right.
And, but I'm also getting a kind of an echo on this end.
Right. Do you have video?
Do I have video? I can, I can start it?
Yes, you'll want to do that.
Let's just see if that works.
Yes, now we have you on the phone, and then we'll need your video. You are a presenter, so you'll be able to do the presentation.
All right, um, I will, so I will go to the, I have my PowerPoint up on my other screen, John.
Yep.
Um, how am I, oh, I'm sharing, right?
Yes, sir.
And there it is.
It's going to get to us, there we go.
All right.
Good.
And you can see my PowerPoint first slide?
Yes.
Uh, can you hear me on the phone now?
Yes.
All right, uh, if you need a little more volume, I can give that to you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn it up.
There you go.
All right, let's see how that works. I don't have any feedback on this ti, this end, so, uh, let me know if that's a problem, John. So, all right, well, good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Duke Welter, and I'm, I'm here before you tonight as Chair of the Fundraising Committee of the Kenny Corridor Collaborative. Thanks for the opportunity to talk with you. Uh, I have to apologize to, uh, to Scott because, uh, he heard, uh, a similar report from me last night as a member of the Utility Advisory Committee, or Board. Uh, so, but I, I hope we'll, uh, we had a good discussion last night, and I hope we'll have another one tonight. Uh, first off, uh, Kenny CC's charge, uh, has been to, uh, act as an, uh, organization formed to assist the city as its partner in raising funds and increasing public awareness of the Kenny Corridor Plan. Now, since March, and, and to that end, we've formed our, our nonprofit and got our IRS, uh, 501(c)(3), uh, determination letter, and we proceeded to, uh, to develop the Facebook page and newsletter and, and other social media. And we have, uh, we have, from the fundraising committee's end, we have pursued a number of grants, uh, that, and some of which have been granted, and, uh, some of which are still in the process of being, um, reviewed by grantors. So, uh, of course, that all came right at the time that, uh, COVID, uh, hit us, which kind of has, uh, uh, thrown a sort of a wrench in a lot of works, as we would all know. Uh, but we have continued to have our, our meetings through the, uh, spring, summer, and fall, uh, both, uh, the Board of the KCC and the Fundraising Committee. And our fundraising team is plugging away on, on, uh, several grants now. Uh, so, we, uh, uh, one of the things that we need to talk about a little bit is the, the flooding of June 2020 and the damage to the Powell Falls Dam. Uh, it's not yet known to what extent, uh, it's been damaged and the cost of repair, if it is to be repaired, or whether it would be prudent to trigger a drawdown. And that's up to the city with UAB and public input. Now, FERC has ordered the city, just in the last, uh, 10 days, to submit a plan and schedule by October 9th for a possible drawdown. Responsible city leaders should be concerned, as, as, uh, as I am, that further heavy rain events will happen in the interim and possibly cause further damage to the dam, even a catastrophic breach. Whether or not there is a drawdown could also have an impact on the timing and potentially the extent of our fundraising efforts. So I'll, I'll explain that a little bit more in a minute. Uh, but it, I can, I can recall, uh, heavy rain events in September and in December, uh, as well as in the spring when there's runoff or the, the spring rain. So I think that, that's a primary, uh, primary concern for the city. And, uh, and as a result, it's a, it's a, it's an important concern that the fundraising committee and the KCC Board are, are concerned about. Um, let me, uh, summarize the, the funding needs in the long and short term, as we know them now, and then go into a little bit more detail. The, in the long term, uh, the, the written concept level costs, estimates that are available are from the Interflu 2017, uh, feasibility report. And, and that calls for, uh, for Powell Falls, for the, uh, all the costs associated with removal or demolition, removal, and corridor restoration, to be at a mid-range of about $1.2 million. The, those costs are inexact, um, and Interflu put a, a range on them of plus or minus 50%. So that's a little over, uh, $600,000 to a little over $1.8 million. And, uh, and we've been operating on the basis of a, a $1.2 million fundraising need, uh, through the, through the KCC. Now, last evening, uh, the project manager for Maels Airs Associates, Peter Haug, told the UAB verbally, uh, that, that he expects costs will be somewhere in the $1.7 to $1.9 million range for Powell Falls removal and restoration. Um, that, that also, that includes, as I said, the demolition and the, and the removal of the dam itself, and the, and then the management of the sediment, which is a big, uh, a big factor in this situation. There's a lot of uncertainties at this point. Uh, so I'll, we, we can come back and talk a little bit more in a little while. On the short-term needs, uh, KCC has committed to work to raise $65,000 toward the city's share of, uh, studies. And the city's share is about, uh, is just north of $200,000, and the Corps of Engineers has contributed a significant amount. But we're working to raise that $65,000 now. And we're also, on the public education front, we're working to, uh, to provide information about other dam removals and about what this process could include. Uh, to that end, we're, uh, we're pursuing, uh, uh, to, I guess, to both ends, we're pursuing, pursuing grants at this time, and we'll keep you posted on that. Um, we, we obtained a DNR, a Wisconsin DNR River Planning Grant that would help fund, uh, informational materials to present to the city and its leaders, you folks, and residents about other comparable dam removals in other parts of the Wisconsin. And we're working on that at this time. Uh, that, that's a picture of the, uh, Colfax Dam Removal, uh, on 18 Mile Crick, uh, which was, uh, about a 15-foot dam removal, uh, and, uh, and then the, the sediment management for the, uh, that created a new village park, uh, and, uh, restored a trout stream which flows into Colfax from the east and, and then beyond the dam site into the Red Cedar River. Uh, Baraboo is another really good example of a, uh, an urban dam removal where they removed, uh, four dam removals, a couple of which were also power generating dams. Uh, and they've had a transformational impact on, on that city that is still going on. And we intend to, uh, to present in this public information, uh, interviews with city leaders and business people and folks that use that corridor, uh, to talk about how it's changed the, uh, the view of the river from the, uh, from the point of view of different groups in the city. Uh, we'll also, uh, also hopefully have some, some drone footage of these sites, and also from the Ward Paper Mill Dam in Merrill, which was similarly removed, and is now a, a delightful city park. The schedule, uh, the current schedule of the, oh, oh, and we also obtained a grant from the River Falls Community Foundation to help river users work together to manage recreational uses that sometimes conflict on the river. And we'll be organizing meetings to that end. We've held that in advance because of the, the COVID, uh, social distancing needs, uh, but that, but work is going forward to, to hold those meetings shortly. So the schedule, uh, and the damage to the dam, uh, is, uh, well, the damage could be, and it could have an impact on the schedule for dam removal and restoration. Uh, right now, the schedule for removal of the Powell Falls Dam calls for drawdown in late summer of 2023, followed by demolition and corridor restoration, uh, through the summer of 2024. That essentially sets the schedule for our major fundraising efforts with a focus on 2023 and 24. And different funders, uh, and different grant programs have different approaches to that. Um, governmental grant programs such as the DNR's Small Dam Removal Grant Program, uh, can provide us with $50,000 to help, uh, toward the, the cost of removal of the dam. Uh, but they have a, an annual deadline, and they have a, uh, they have a schedule on which they operate. And if we are to, if we are, if it's possible for us to move this forward from 2023, 24 to an earlier time with a drawdown and, and, uh, and the, the ability to dry out those sediments, well, that would put us into an earlier grant cycle. And a lot of government grant programs are like that, whether you're going to, um, uh, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation or, uh, the Fish and Wildlife Service, or, uh, a couple others that we're, that we're in contact with. Um, so, what you decide to do with the dam, and what FERC allows the city to do with removal of the Powell Falls Dam, uh, could have an impact on when we make those grant applications. Now, there are other grant applications to other grantors such as, uh, uh, businesses that have environmental grant programs. And Orvis is a pretty good example of that with their Conservation Fund, Patagonia is another one. And we're in touch with those and other foundations. They have often more flexibility on when you submit a grant. Uh, and so, uh, they, they might have, uh, they might, they might be flexible if the timetable for removal of the Powell Falls Dam was to move forward. Now, the other place that might come into play is the, uh, the Wisconsin State Budget. And we're currently working on developing the case for an allocation of stewardship dollars from the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Fund, uh, to be, uh, uh, provided for this project. That is not unprecedented, uh, uh, and it is possible for the legislature to allocate stewardship funds in a state, in a biennial state budget without the requirement that they be used in that state budget. The, uh, a good example is a flood control project at Arcadia, uh, for which between $14 and $15 million was allocated a couple of budgets ago, but it hasn't been spent on that project yet. Uh, so this, it could be a similar situation where maybe we make a request that would be part of the Wisconsin State Budget for the 2021 to 23 biennium, uh, which is being formulated now in the Governor's Office and will be, uh, announced in, uh, January, and debated during next spring, and then hopefully passed by July 1, uh, of 2021. Um, if we have, if we're able to garner some approval for stewardship funds for this, uh, they could be set aside. Uh, and even if the, whether the project was done in 2022 during the upcoming biennium, or whether it was done in 2023 and 24 in the following biennium. So if the city chooses not to pursue an earlier drawdown because of the damage and, and the impacts, and, and, uh, well, if the city does choose to pursue the, an earlier drawdown, and that impacts the time that we could potentially remove it, the dam, and restore that part of the river, it could be timely to pursue that state funding. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of flexibility. It just happens because of the way this, uh, this is structured, uh, in, in time terms. Uh, and, and, uh, and, and, and that's got, got to have some flexibility. So we've, we've looked at a lot of different sources for dam removal and restoration dollars. Uh, some we've, uh, pursued, uh, informally with some of these, uh, grantors, uh, and got a good idea of where they, whether they would like to support things. Uh, others were, were, we, we haven't explored as much. But, uh, I've also mentioned the, already mentioned the, the state budget. But you know, um, Pierce County is another, another source of potential funding support. And, uh, of course, the Kinnik Kinnik is an important, uh, economic and tourism, uh, boost for River Falls and thus Pierce County. Uh, and it wouldn't be inappropriate to ask Pierce County to, uh, to potentially allocate some funding, uh, for, for this project. Uh, Cabela's has been a good source of conservation funding. So when you go to, go to Cabela's and they ask you if you want to round up, uh, on your purchase, please do it because they, uh, they put a significant amount of dollars into projects, uh, and this is an appropriate project for them to, uh, to ask them for funding. Um, I've al, already mentioned the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, uh, and the stewardship program which is administered there. But there are several different, uh, sub-grant programs in the DNR that have potential help for, uh, things like, uh, trail development and that sort of thing. Uh, also, uh, groups like, uh, Patagonia and Winona, uh, outdoor businesses that rely on outdoors people, uh, are, uh, we're in touch with them, and hopefully they'll, they'll be supportive. I'd like to see support from civic groups in River Falls. And, uh, and part of our fundraising effort includes people that, uh, that their charge is to go out and talk with those groups as we get more of this public information ready, and we get closer to the time when the funding will be helpful. So, so you can, you can expect that that's going to happen with the local civic groups. Um, individual donors are an important part of this. Uh, I put Bill Gates in there just because everybody asks Bill Gates for gazillions of dollars, and, uh, and, and all we'd be asking for, for him is pocket change. But, uh, but there are other people, uh, around the country who are in a position to help provide that sort of thing. Uh, the Fish America Foundation has been a really good supporter of healthy rivers. And, uh, my conversation with them was, we're going to have a bunch of studies and things that are preliminary, uh, to the main project. Uh, we'd like to ask you if it's appropriate to make a, make a funding request to Fish America Foundation. America Foundation, uh, for the preliminary stuff, uh, and then another larger one for the, for the dam removal. And they said, ah, not so much for the preliminary studies, but when you're getting set to do the dam removal, we're going to be really excited about that. So that's a kind of, uh, how would you say it, scoping conversation that you often have with a, with a potential funder, and, uh, and there are a couple others I haven't mentioned. Um, it, it, one of the, one of the really good supporters of dam removals around the country have been tribes in those areas, and, uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, uh, in connection with Trout Unlimited. And I'm, I'm sure that you want to hear, uh, what interest TU has in this because the TU has been, uh, involved in the development of the Kenny Corridor Plan and the civic discussion. Um, so, uh, let me, let me go at it from the point of view of, uh, of, um, how Trout Unlimited is being asked to support this. Your local chapter is one of the best chapters in TU, in my opinion, and I used to be, I spent ten years on the Board of Trustees and I reviewed, uh, uh, status reports for four hundred chapters, so I got a sense of what their capacities are. And the KIAP to wish chapter has been concerned about the Kinney-Kinney forever and, uh, since the seventies when it was formed, and has, they have endorsed the, uh, the project and pledged their resources to help support the dam removal project and the river restoration. Uh, and they have asked, uh, uh, Trout Unlimited at the state level, where we have six thousand members and twenty-one chapters, to also endorse the project, and that's been done. And also the Regional Restoration Group, uh, the Driftless Area Restoration Effort has also endorsed that. The request now is going to the National Leadership Council of Trout Unle- Trout Unlimited, which will be acting on it in the next month, uh, to, to make it a national priority and part of the national conservation agenda. Uh, that would mean it would allow us to use TU's development staff, uh, and support it, to ask supporters for individual or corporate and philanthropic support of this project. Now, that's not unprecedented. Uh, TU was a key partner in the, uh, Penobscot Restoration Program, which opened up, uh, four dams and about fifteen hundred miles of that river, uh, to, uh, to, uh, fish migration, and the, the response of the ocean-going fish that need fresh water has been pretty astonishing. But that was a, a multi-year project and it was a, it was a, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred million dollars that was raised through various sources. The, TU was also heavily involved in the Elwah Dam's removal, uh, in the state of Washington in the Olympic Peninsula. That took, mm, fifteen years to get two key dams removed that have really resulted in a significant amount of, um, uh, of salmon, uh, run restoration, and, uh, and, and that's now been completed, and it's a, considered to be, uh, significant success for that, uh, Puget Sound ecosystem. And finally, TU's been, uh, an integral part of the Clamath River Dam removals, uh, in Northern California and Southern Oregon, which are in the process of fundraising right now. It's interesting to note that tribes have been crucial, crucially involved in all of those major projects, uh, so it would not be unusual to have, um, folks, uh, Lakota and Hochunk, uh, also interested in this. That's just an area that we hope to, uh, to work on, and, uh, and we hope we'll get a good response from them. Uh, this was, this was Lakota, Ojibwa and, and Hochunk country, hunting country, and, uh, and there's a tie to, tie to that, uh, to the neighborhood. Uh, so, so don't be surprised if that, um, if that comes to fruition. Um, we, um, so, so there are a lot of sources to work on. Uh, we're trying to juggle, uh, juggle the schedule and juggle our needs and juggle the funding program, the funding deadlines and those sorts of things and get all these things worked on. Um, currently, we're developing, uh, grant applications to Bass Pro Shops, Cabela's, uh, Patagonia and the Wisconsin DNR for the 2021, uh, River Grant. Uh, those will all be submitted within the next, uh, month or two. So, we have been busy. Uh, we haven't been, how would you say it, uh, publicly prominent about what we've been working on, uh, but I, I have to give a, a big kudo to the, the members of the fundraising committee and the volunteers of the KCC Board. Uh, they're just, they're, they're a, a great group of people, great to work with, and everybody has this project, uh, close to their hearts. So, uh, it's, it's been trying circumstances to try and make, get, make sure that things keep moving, uh, but we're, but we're able to do that. I, I think, I'm, I'm looking forward to the success of this fundraising effort and the project itself. So, working, working together for the good of the river and the good of the city. I think, I'm confident that we'll get to where we need to go. So, that's all I have to report. I'd just like to thank you for the time, uh, and I'd, I'd invite any questions that you have. And Judy Babcock, the Chair of our Board, uh, and our, uh, our Clark Bug is also on board. She may be able to answer some questions that I can't.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gany.
Hey Duke, I thank you for your, uh, great presentation, excuse me, great presentation. Um, you've really provided a lot of great updates to us, um, and given us great confidence in where we're moving towards. Um, you guys do a lot of work behind the scenes that doesn't get recognized, and we appreciate you. Um, I think you're carrying out that charge, and we're, I'm excited as one council member to see where you're going to take this.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Thumbs up.
Yeah, Mr. Plunkett, go ahead.
The wrong spacebar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, also appreciate all the work people are doing. Uh, I am, uh, at a lower level of knowledge on this than many other people. Um, have we at this point already adopted, uh, a specific plan on how to do removal and restoration, or is that something that we're going to be looking at in the engineering studies coming up?
Uh, Ben, uh, that is a matter between the city's, uh, engineering consultant, Ayers and Associates, and, and it has been, and, and what they've been doing is preparing the decommissioning report and, uh, plan to go to FERC. And they've already done one version of that that went out for public comment, uh, and received plenty of public comment. I think it came out in February and, uh, they got comment during the spring. Now they're working on, uh, the final, uh, decommissioning plan that is expected to come out in January, and FERC will need to give, to review it and give its, uh, uh, response to it. Sometimes they put in some other requirements or changes, but eventually they'll come out with a, a decommissioning order. And then it should be at a place where, um, it should be close to being able to be let out for bids. You should be able to have some pretty strong confidence in the cost estimates at that point. And hopefully all of that will come together in twenty-one as we, uh, as we find out just what they propose to do, just what they estimate the costs are going to be, and while the timing looks like it'll work. Now, you know, that, so, so we've had this one process with FERC and Ayers moving forward with a fairly defined timeline leading up to an August twenty-three drawdown. But that was before the dam was damaged in the June flood. And if we end up drawing it down, if the city ends up drawing it down sooner, that would, that, that could potentially impact the timeline of when, uh, the demolition and removal and the restoration could take place. So, so it's kind of in flux right now, uh, but the city will be submitting a plan to FERC by this October ninth, uh, for what it, it has decided to do as far as the drawdown is concerned. And Scott was on board the UAB meeting last night, and we had the, the city's, um, dam removal consultant, uh, and we had, um, uh, Peter Hogg from Ayers, and there was a good discussion at the UAB level about, uh, what went on. I think Kevin, uh, Westhus is, uh, is supportive of a drawdown, and it sounded like there was significant support for a drawdown and, and, you know, which makes, oh, Kevin's here, good. Um, that makes it, that makes a lot of sense because you don't want to have another flooding event and a catastrophic amount of damage to the dam. So, that, does that answer your question, Dan?
Um, as we look at after the drawdown and we determine the condition of the dam, uh, has the decision already been made as to what we will be doing with demolition on the dam and what the final course of the river will be? Or is it possible that the city saves a lot of money and does something similar to what Minneapolis did with Mill Ruins Park? Uh, leave a part of that concrete rebar reinforced structure as part of the historical, um, aspects of the city, much like the railroad trestle that we see downtown? And we just go through the limestone around for the new channel for the river? Has, has that already been decided? I apologize for not being entirely up to date on this.
I, I can tell you that the initial, uh, decommissioning, uh, report or study report, uh, called for the removal of the dam, uh, and, uh, I suppose there's a decision that would still be made about the, uh, powerhouse structure itself, uh, but the, the, the call is for the, the dam to be, to be removed and, and, you know, have a, have a free-flowing river from the, about the area where the South Fork of the, of the Kenny comes into, uh, now, what's now the pool below the junction called Dam. And Scott, Scott or, uh, Kevin, please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, Mr. Plunkett, I think in the initial study, so that, that Duke was talking about February, I think it was February of 2020 here, they had left some of the, um, structure around where the powerhouse is, um, for potential pedestrian bridge abutment across the, the river, but the, the current proposal by Ayers in the draft form was to remove most of the, uh, concrete dam. Um, there was, there was some talk in that initial draft about the construction methodology used in that dam and how it was kind of slapped together and slabbed with a B, not slap with a P. Um, and so, there's some limitation to, I mean, I guess there's no limitation to what you can do with dynamite, but it, to do a, to do a reasonably practical removal, um, they were basically taking it down in sections, um, from, from rock to rock, from rock abutment on one side to the, uh, kind of the foundation of the powerhouse on the other side. That's how I remember it, but I'd have to look specifically to see how many feet of concrete they were leaving, but I, that's, that's how I roughly remember the, the initial draft, and then they're kind of reviewing that based on all the comments from stakeholders, um, some of which probably said, we don't want to see any remnant of the dams and other stakeholders that said, let's think about this idea of a, kind of a ruins or, or leaving. There was even discussion in the, some of the original public Kenny Corridor discussions about can you kind of cut holes in it and leave, you know, a certain amount of it? Because you can physically walk across the dam now if it was dry, um, which it's not, but that was, so that was some thought is kind of create this, I don't know, aqueduct looking structure out of the dam, but that didn't, that didn't go very far. So I, at this point, it's pretty much a removal.
We would still have a free-flowing river if we simply went around through the limestone on the side. That would restore the goal of having a free-flowing Kinney-Kinney River with a significance savings in cost to the city and taxpayers, wouldn't it?
I think we would have to understand the removal of the, the bluff, right, to go through the limestone remains additional construction and disturbing those areas that are natural areas, particularly where the, um, cemetery property is that's managed by the city as well as the Glen Park property. It's pretty steep there, so, um, it, it certainly could be a consideration, and if the city wanted Ayers and the consultant to consider that, then that would be something that, you know, the, the council, I guess, could ask about is what you are doing, and then go from there. But, uh, I think Scott's right, right now, the proposal is removal.
And, and just to comment, to take it too far off track here, but there's some, some conversation last night at the UAB, and maybe Kevin can, can chime in on this, but there's some concern about the damage that's been done to the dam with the flooding. Um, as I, as I understand it, it's sort of a very pedestrian manner. There's a, there's a piece that's sort of added to the top of the dam that's, that's showing some potential wear. I think we're worried about freezing. Um, one of the other reasons, Mr. Plunkett, that we picked the removal of that dam is because we kind of matched up the useful life of that dam, and it's, it's showing its age. There's some cracks in it, there's some dents in it, there's some, it's starting to fail. My concern, if we left it in place, would be it would become kind of an attractive nuisance where people would be on it or, or horsing around on it and, and it could become a dangerous thing. So I, 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 I know I continue to support absolute removal of it, um, and after hearing, a- after what I would expect to be a report from, from Ayers and, and, uh, FERC and other people later on this year about the actual life or, or viability of the dam anymore, probably, I, I, I think we at the UAB last night discussed pretty realistically having to draw the dam, having to draw the water level down just to see what's going on. I mean, there's the chunk missing on the right wing wall, and, um, there's a concern now about freezing because the water will not flow over the top, it'll find its path around that right wing wall, and so that could really be catastrophic to the, to the dam. So there's, there's more to come, and like I said, I don't want to steal Kevin's, Kevin's thunder about it, but, um, it's a mess, to be honest with you.
I'll, I'll just put a little bit, I I pretty much hit it. There is some visible damage done to that dam. Don't know what's invisible, so we'd like to draw it down to take a look at it to assess the, assess the entire dam. When it's drawn down, that may give an opportunity to leave it drawdown. We'll, we'll discover that in the future. Tomorrow, we're meeting with the DNR to get their opinion on a drawdown. They have some dates related to amphibian, um, nocturnalists in the wintertime and hibernation. So, uh, hibernation, I guess, is the right word, and September thirtieth is usually their drawdown date, though they do leave exceptions for that. So we're going to be talking with the DNR tomorrow, and after we hear from them tomorrow, we're probably going to move forward, hopefully with drawing it down if they're okay with that. If not, we're going to reassess at that point. We have to take a look at the dam. That's all I have.
Well, and, and, and that, what the, what the city decides to do with the drawdown could have an impact on the process of removal because drawing it down, uh, with, with the idea of assessing it, it gets you out, out from under another catastrophic event. And the other thing is that it speeds up the, it, uh, advances the process of drying out those sediments. And, uh, what you'll find, I think, is that soon you'll have willows and, and box elders and, and, and other things growing on that, uh, soil as it dries out. That's going to have an impact on, um, how much you have to haul and how much, and how you haul it when you do start doing the, um, the corridor restoration. Uh, it would be, uh, it would be more difficult to be dealing with those wet sediments, and it would be a longer delay to dry out those wet sediments. So, uh, you know, the, the, the potential catastrophic impact is first, but then you, you can anticipate that there could be some benefits to the, the, the removal and the cost of removal, uh, if, if you don't refill it after a drawdown.
And I'll just say lastly, both FERC Dam Inspection Group and the FERC Hydro Re-Licensing Group, both of those FERC groups are really working with us and really kind of want to let us, let us chart the future of that right now. They'll say what's best for River Falls and let us know. So, and that, then we'll be working with the DNR lastly to try to see this through.
Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. I, I don't think that anyone, particularly me with my question, was questioning the drawdown or inspecting of the bridge or the dam there, but But rather, would it not be possible to save hundreds of thousands, if not into the seven figure range of funds? By, once we complete that drawdown and inspect the dam, to have the new route of the river being going directly either west or east of that existing dam? If west, there is a space that is easily three times the width of the current channel there before the cemetery. And if east, I remember the topography there at least twice. Now that limestone might provide a better natural course for the river and a more interesting falls than what we see in the current channel. I, 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 I understand the need for a drawdown, but I, I don't really understand why we've chosen the most expensive option here.
And I think I'll go back to Kevin's comment about dam safety. So the, the concern is that that structure is aging and it's likely to fail. So it's not a safe structure to leave in place. And that's your challenge, Ben. If you, if you wanted to, you could, right? You could, but it's not advisable. That's I think what we're hearing from the engineers.
If we have a new channel, Julie, that dam is not holding back any water and is not a danger. I think that there's an intentional ignoring of what I'm saying here, if that's what you're.
I'm hearing you. I'm hearing you. That is a canyon, Ben. So again, we could talk about geology. I think it's not probably of this forum. If you'd like to get together and go there and look at it and talk about the geology with an engineer, I think that'd be a good conversation. I'd be interested in that.
I think, Julie, that that is intentionally obstructionist of somebody that is on the city council that is responsible for millions of dollars in taxpayer funds that are getting spent here. And frankly, I don't appreciate that attitude.
Well, I'm sorry, I was trying to be respectful of your comments.
Okay, I, I think, I think we need to all relax for a second. We can't really make any kind of decisions tonight. We have to wait till we draw, if what FERC wants to do, what the D N R wants to do with the drawdown, then we can look at everything and kind of have more, have a bigger picture of what needs to be done, what can be done and what might be able to be done. So I suggest we kind of wait until that happens before we have any further discussion on this right now. And let's get, I don't, does anybody else, do we have any other questions about what the Kenny C C is doing now?
Mr.?
Yep, Mr. Gagne.
I think your previous comment is, uh, right on. I think, uh, we need to have a, a bigger discussion. Um, obviously we can't do all of that discussion here on this, um, council meeting. But I think we need to take a better look at what is the best option moving forward? Um, with, um, that dam. And, and I think a drawdown, like, uh, utility director Westhouse said, um, drawdown might give us a better picture of exactly the totality of the damage, how we can move forward. Um, and best utilize, um, taxpayer funding. So I, I agree that we have a, an issue here, uh, with older person Plunkett and Morsette's comments. And I think we need to move on that and make a, a good assessment, um, educated, um, in its totality, uh, without getting emotional or, um, unfactual, but I really want to see the facts of what damage has been created and what the best options are moving forward.
So, so does anybody have any questions for either Duke or Judy on the, what the Kenny C C is doing right now?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Hal.
Uh, my question, um, Mr. Walter, uh, is just, um, I understand what you said about, um, kind of the benefits to the drawdown and, and, uh, and potential cost savings around having that, um, land that's currently underwater begin to dry out ahead of our projected schedule. Is there something that, that you need, um, from this body, uh, in order to, uh, help you with your schedule of fundraising? Or, uh, you know, are there certain decisions that need to be made on, on a timeline that will, um, help facilitate the ask from the D N R? For example, or from, uh, the legislature? Given, you know, some of these uncertainties, but, uh, has something changed, you know? And with respect to the timeline that we were on with FERC to begin with?
Well, uh, we've been, that's, that's a real good question. I think we have been operating based on, um, the schedule that's been set by, by FERC. And, and this one kind of throws it a little bit into uncertainty. And as you can, if you can, uh, get, uh, a drawdown okayed, so you can take care of that damage assessment and then make a decision about that the city needs to look at, uh, whether, whether or not it, it's interested that a, a cost of repair would be, uh, possible or acceptable that, and, and it's entirely possible that the, that you folks could say, well, it's not, uh, it doesn't make sense to, uh, to repair it. Let's keep it drawn down. Then, then we could work with Ayers and FERC, uh, to get a decision about, uh, uh, get a, get a report for us. Some estimates for us on how that changes the timeline. And, and then that would fit well in, if we could do that, uh, you know, during this fall, uh, then that would fit us into the timeline of being able to talk with state legislators and the governor's office and the D N R about, uh, a budget allocation in the upcoming budget. So yes, we're going to wait for answers along with you. Uh, and then your decision about what to do with a drawdown is going to give us the next, uh, the, the ability to make that next step forward. And perhaps we could, we'd be glad, Judy and I'd be glad to come back and talk with you. Uh, if, if we think there's a point where, uh, we would ask you to take a particular action to say, uh, it's not our intent to refill the dam and it's not our intent to repair it. Then we can go to, uh, some of these other funders and say, here's how this, uh, changes the situation. And here's how our request to you is timely.
Thank you.
We'll be back, come back anytime you'd like to have questions for us.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Questions about the, the key, the, the Kenny C C and what they're doing? Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Walter, and thank you, Ms. Babcock. We really appreciate you guys being here tonight and all you're doing, so thanks a lot.
And thanks to you all, appreciate the time.
Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. John, is there anybody at the, in the, at the, uh, yeah, Mr. Morsette, I'll get to you in a second, okay? Is there, John, is there anybody at the?
Nope.
Chambers?
Nope.
Anybody, anybody on the phone or online?
Not that, uh, commented or asked to speak before, so.
Okay.
No.
I believe Mr. Morsette had something.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I am tired tonight in my River Falls Fire Department T-shirt that was given to us, uh, a couple of years ago by the chief. Uh, I want to make two quick comments about the fire department. Unfortunately, because of COVID, uh, the annual fire department open house, which everybody looks forward to, it's a great event. Usually happens, I think, the last Monday of September has to be canceled. So that's, um, that event is, uh, again widely attended. It's a great, um, a great event for safe, fire safety and kids are involved and families and so forth. Um, the other thing that that, uh, that that event does is it also helps attract potential new firefighters. Um, I know that they have a drive going on right now or a, uh, uh, open application process. I believe there's a meeting October 10th for, uh, for people to understand what the, what that involves. And I think the deadline is October 25th. I'd urge people, if they are interested in supporting our local fire department, um, to, uh, to take a look at that online, either at the city website or on Facebook or some other social media. But, um, just because we are faced with COVID right now, doesn't mean the fire department gets to stop doing what they got to do when it takes a lot of people to, to make that, uh, the high performing fire department we've got. So I just wanted to recognize them and thank them, uh, the chief, all the way down to the, uh, to the newest firefighter. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. First, we have a acknowledgement of the following minutes. Uh, we have the bid board from 3:10 and 7:14. We, uh, have the U A B workshop from 8:17. We have the planning commission from 8:04. We have the police and fire commission from 5:06. We have the library board from 8:03 and we have the rec, uh, park and rec advisory boards from 7:15. Uh, the next thing is a resolution accepting the public improvements, uh, for highway or for High, Highview Meadows, the fifth edition. Um, uh, these, this resolution would approve the public improvements made at Highview Meadows. That, that would include the water sewers, stormwater infrastructure, sidewalks, trail and streets. Uh, the next one is a resolution accepting public infrastructure at Sterling Pond's cottages, which would include the same thing as, uh, the, um, uh, Highview Meadows. Uh, the next one is a resolution appointing Mike Maureen as a city, uh, forester. And the last one is a resolution of authorizing urban forestry grant application, which would provide reimbursements for Emerald Ash Borer expenses in 2021. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Plunkett, yep, hang on one second. Mr. Plunkett, you had your hand up?
Mr. Mayor, in the consent agenda, what did you list after the library board? I, I don't see that on my agenda.
Uh, the park and rec advisory board. That's what's on mine. Hang on a second, let me make sure. I might have a different agenda.
We don't have that on the city packet.
Oh, okay, so we'll take, we'll take the park, oh, mine says park and rec advisory board too. So we'll take the park and rec advisory board off of the consent agenda from 7:15. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
I would like to pull number four and five.
Four and five? Anybody else have anything they want to pull?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three A through E, um, six and seven.
Second. Questions or comments on anything? Yep.
Um, yeah, I just want to, I just want to say that I appreciate Mike Maureen's multi talent. Um, and I'm delighted that we're going to have someone, um, uh, shepherding our city trees, especially with, um, the challenges we're going to have with the Emerald Ash Bore. So, um, I appreciate that we have someone in house with the skills to do it, um, you know, and welcome him in that, um, in that role.
Okay, anybody else?
Back up Diane's comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
Um, I think the city has done a good job kind of managing that Emerald Ash Borer. For the trees that we're taking out, we're trying to replace trees. And, you know, we typically do, one comment or question I had last meeting was, uh, regarding our tree purchase program. Uh, we're using a lot of those trees to replace those Emerald Ash Bowers, um, tree removals. And I commend the city for replacing trees as they remove them. Um, trees are a, a very, um, important commodity in our city. And I, commodity is probably not the right word, but it, it is very commendable that the city has taken that approach.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, Christie, I have a, I have a first and a second on agenda items three A through E and six and seven.
First by Ms. Odean and a secondary, Mr. Morsette to approve the consent agenda. We'll start with Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Plunkett?
Aye.
Yours did.
Aye.
Morsette?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Odean?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Seven zero unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gagne, you pulled four and five. Do you want to talk, uh, together about them or you want to do them separately?
I could do them separately if nobody else on the council has an issue with that.
We'll go with number four first.
Yeah, that's fine. Number four, um, and, and both questions apply to number four and five, resolution accepting public improvements. For number four and resolution accepting public improvements for number five. And they're Highview Meadows, uh, Meadows, fifth edition and Sterling Pond's cottages. Um, my question is regarding the public improvements. Can somebody give us a 10,000 foot view of why the city would have to accept public improvements at a city level for both of these projects? Just so the public can understand.
Yep, Mr. Simpson, would you like to give us that view?
Sure, how about a 30,000 foot view? Well, I see Amy popped on, she can give you, she, she can get down to the one foot view, but, um, Amy, do you want to take that?
Yes, I will, uh, provide a bit of information. Uh, our senior engineer is out this evening. So, um, really what we're looking at is infrastructure that has been built by the developer. And that is water sewer, uh, infrastructure. So what the city is looking to do is to inspect that infrastructure and accept it before the, uh, rest of the infrastructure for the subdivision goes in.
So, Mr. Mayor, follow up. Uh, what, as a 35,000 view, um, what does that kind of entail as far as a, uh, public improvement? And who paid for that?
Um, well, so like I mentioned, it's, it's water sewer, streets, um, infrastructure. And when the developer requests a final approval, then city staff heads out, um, makes those inspections, typically puts together a punch list, provides that back to the developer's engineer, um, and they make modifications as necessary. Obviously, all of the infrastructure needs to meet city code and, um, that is paid for by the developer.
So do we do very similar, um, things in all of our developments across the city?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I think that's a, a great use. A developer wants to, or into the community or has been in the community, um, builds any kind of development, whether it's east, west, north, south. Um, and wants to do a project that they pay for them, uh, projects. Uh, but then the city takes on the responsibility of maintaining those going forward. Um, I think that's a great use of resources, um, and development, purchases and developments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Yep. Um, yes, go ahead, Mr. Downey.
Regarding Highview Meadows, um, there's been issues in my part of the city, um, regarding water pressure. The city's always been good at dealing with them. However, are they covered under, um, when we talk about warranties, um, regarding, uh, the public improvements in this sense? Amy, would you know that?
Um, I guess I'm, regarding the water pressure, I may punt to either Scott or Kevin on that one.
Yeah, the, I mean, council member Downing, the, a water pressure issue is not likely related to public improvement construction on, unless they didn't install the right size water main. Um, but that's more of a system, system pressure issue. We've had, the warranty period is intended to cover things like, uh, failure of concrete where it spalls or something. The next year you find out that it didn't set right or it wasn't, wasn't done correctly. Um, or settling issues related to, you know, manhole, um, risers or things like that. So the water pressure issue is, I wouldn't put that on the developer. That's, that's typically related to the overall design of the system. So that's ultimately our responsibility as a city. Although I, I certainly have been involved in city projects, not in River Falls, where, um, the wrong size pipe was installed. Um, or somebody bore through, uh, you know, bored through a s- uh, stormwater pipe with a water main or something. So that's why we do those inspections, um, and try to identify those issues at the time. You can't always do that. Sometimes those, those issues are developed, but there, we're also doing, um, it's not just a final inspection. So there's, there's ongoing, um, review of, of many of these improvements throughout the construction process, including when they do the trenching and things like that.
I know that the layout of the land can change, uh, how a plan works or goes into effect in that sense. So, but in your professional opinion, um, this, the, the way the, the warranty is written, it does address public improvements as far as what standard is, correct?
Yeah, correct. It's, you know, it's, uh, gives us some opportunity to see if we didn't catch something. we didn't catch something in the terrain or the the construction, but we shouldn't get overly confident in our 18-month construction period. Frankly, we're, we are relying on contractors in large part to do good work, and we've had pretty good success overall because we, we know many of the contractors that are doing the work. But you can hide things if you choose to hide them, but we certainly are trying to be the eyes and ears for the community, because ultimately, we're going to have those improvements for 100-plus years.
Yeah, and I guess, and that's an opportunity to say thanks to our staff, too, because I know when I've always come to, when I've come to them, when I run to an issue in this part of the city, they've been able to get people out and help them, so thanks, guys.
Okay, anybody, anybody else have anything, Mr. Plunkett?
Historical question, that wrong size of water main brought up a trace of a memory, and was that Mr. Parent or Mr. Watson that had noticed that we didn't need a new water tower, that simply putting in the correct size of water main took care of one of those water pressure issues that Mr. Downing brought up?
I'm going to describe that to Mr. Parent.
That was a long time ago. But, yeah, those things do happen.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for number four and number five on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number four or five, and five?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Christie, we have a, we have a first and a second on agenda item number four and five.
Yeah, motion, first by Downing, second by Watson, start with Mr. Watson on the vote. Mr. Plunkett? Mr. Beerstead?
Aye.
Mr. Morissette?
Aye.
Mr. Gagne?
Aye.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Ms. Odine?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. onward and upward here, ordinance, this will be the first reading on ordinance number 2020 dash 08, to rezone and amend future land use map for South Lawson Lane, lot number one. The second reading will be on October 13th. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay, the next one, this will be the first reading for ordinance 2020 dash 09, amending chapter 16.10 of the extraterritorial subdivisions of the Unanimous Code. Any questions on this from anyone?
So I do have a one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
I was wondering if Mr. Simpson could describe how we got to this point of amending this chapter in particular for people who are watching today.
Amy, would you rather take that, or Scott?
I can take that. Yeah, so if you recall, a few months ago, there was a request for a waiver from our extraterritorial subdivision boundary, and that went to both plant commission and council. And and through a legal review during that process, it was recommended that we take a look at our code and take a look at some amendments that strengthened our code and showed that we were not limiting development use. So that's what this amendment is, is putting forward tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? Yep, Mr. Matson?
Um, one thing that has, I have a question about is, I understand the change in language in the preamble and and in several other sections, taking out use as a reason and a metric for approving or denying subdivisions. I'm not completely clear yet on the change from a 35-acre and five-acre subdivision to the 10-acre subdivision allowance in this particular proposal. So you may not have an answer on that right now, I, but I am wondering if we can get some information in the, in the meantime on kind of the reasoning behind that. And that may be a question for our legal counsel to respond as well. Amy, if you're not comfortable doing that, I'm fine hearing that.
Yeah, let us take a look at that. I think we have some information that we can pull together and provide to you that that might be true.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Okay, anybody else have anything on this? Let's move on to the next resolution amending total project cost for the police department remodel and addition project. This would, this would adjust the previously authorized amount of $4.5 million. It would adjust it to 4,000, or $4,594,749 due to the needed roof repairs. And I will take amend, I will take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution amending the total project cost for police department remodel and addition project.
Second.
Okay, now, questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Even though we are amending this to do of the original bidding or funding of this project, are we doing anything to alleviate ice damming aside from just adding on to the roofing of that building?
I think Mr. Rafferty is here with us, are you not, Jason?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, Mr. Gagne, we, no, nothing is being done currently to alleviate the the ice dams. What we're probably going to find is that with the newer building being constructed on the, on the west end, that's where the water will be draining off the last part of the roof. That's going to be a better insulated building likely, and more, you know, and the, and the ice dams are probably not going to be an issue. If we do continue to have problems with ice dams, we can certainly put some heat tape or something on, on that portion of the roof. I know that's what they did this last year. We, we tried putting some heat tape up there to see if that would, that would help, and it did, it kept water from pounding up there, and that alleviated part of the problem. But, yeah, that, that, but the best we can do there is probably put, put some heat tape up.
Thank you for that. You know, in my personal house, and I know it's a lot smaller scale than, say, a large police building out in that corporate park, I did the exact same thing, that I had some ice damming that didn't cause any damage, but I was concerned of that, so I put up heat tape in my gutters and along my roof staggered, and this last year I had zero issues. It melted off all of that. I didn't have to get up there and knock down any ice dams or worry about any water infiltration. I mean, I appreciate them comments and just hope that going forward that we would do the same thing, right? Do this early instead of later to alleviate any staff time. Heat tape's cheap compared to remodels or repairs or insurance claims. I think that would be a great opportunity for us to maybe throw those up there if they're not going to affect that roof. Thanks, Jason.
Comments on this? Okay. Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution amending the total project cost for the police department remodel and addition.
There's a first by Watson, second by Downing to approve the resolution. Start with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Seven zero one favor, thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next we'll move on to the administrators' report. Anybody have any questions for Scott? Now would be the time. Scott, if you have anything extra for us?
I just want to recognize, I think it's been done a few times before, but the extraordinary work going on by city staff and some volunteers related to the, the election and getting on all the absentee votes ready and processed, coordinate with two different county clerks, getting the right amount of ballots, the right ballots for the right places, and getting, getting those processed and continuing to serve the public is is always a challenge in a presidential election year because of the, the sensitivity that voters bring with that election, but they certainly have been doing, doing a great job, and the drop boxes now are, are available and marked here at City Hall. And so we encourage people to return those directly if, if they're able. Certainly, they can put them in the mail, but we, we've offered that physical drop box for, for folks to do that here, too, at City Hall. I'll take any questions if there is any.
Okay, so we'll move on to the comptroller report for August with Ms. Odine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the comptroller's report for August 2020. General fund revenues through the end of August were $8,296,913, or 76% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in August included $2,372,673 from the final tax settlement and $257,438 in state grants as part of the Routes to Recovery Program designed to reimburse Wisconsin municipalities for unplanned COVID-19-related expenses. Expenditures for the same period were $6,230,437, or 57% of budgeted expenses. So expenditures for the month included $46,755 in street maintenance costs. Net revenues over expenditures for the period ending August 31st, 2020, are $2,066,477.
Thank you, Ms. Odine. Okay, I just have one appointment I'd like to make. I'd like to, a new appointment of Michael Metro through July of 2021. He will be filling a vacancy that we have, so he'll be, he'll be filling the remainder of a term.
I'm with approval of the mayor's appointment.
Second.
Christie, we have first and a second, first and a second on the library board appointment.
A first by Downing, second by Gagne to approve the appointment. Start with Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Seven zero one favor, thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Move to adjourn.
Christie, we have first and a second to adjourn.
Gagne.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Christie. Mr. Simpson, do you?
I'm just waving goodnight.
Oh, okay.